Thursday, April 7th, 6:01 PM, and this is the Service Committee meeting.
Ready? Thank you. I'd like to call the Service Committee to order at 6:01 PM. Members present are Steve Young, Aaron Sharick, Brenton Potter, and myself as chairman. We're going to open it up now for any public participation from anybody. Seeing none, we're going to have to approve the minutes of the March 17th meeting.
Some motion.
Got a motion by Aaron in the second.
Second.
Second by Steve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, any more public participation on that? If not, I'd like to introduce Blake Austin from the Rumkey Company. He'd like to talk a little bit about some trash holders or containers.
I have a PowerPoint. Will I be able to get that displayed?
I don't know.
If not, I have a hard copy. I can...
Okay, just do the hard copy right now.
Alright, are we good to go?
Yep.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Like Terry said, my name is Blake Austin. I'm the Municipal and Public Sector Specialist for Rumkey Waste and Recycling. Here with me this evening are Eric Weber, our Area Sales Manager, and then Mark O'Brien, our Regional Vice President, are also present. Here to discuss the benefits of a private hauler for your community for the waste and recycling services. However, before I get into the service side of it all, I'd like to tell you all a bit about Rumkey, who we are and what we do. We were founded in 1932 by brothers William and Bernard Rumkey. When Rumkey actually started, we were originally a pig farm, and they would use scrap food from a waste hall as feed for pigs. As time went on, they sold the pig side of the operation and focused more on their attention towards the waste and recycling services. We're currently in the third generation of that family business, and the company is privately owned by the Rumkey family. We acquired our first recycling facility in 1989, and today we recycle about a billion pounds of material annually. We're based in Cincinnati, and we provide waste and recycling services to about 450 communities in the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, and West Virginia areas. As it pertains to Bucyrus, we currently operate the Crawford County Sanitary Landfill, where your trash is currently being taken to. Our nearest hauling company runs out of there, and we currently house about 30 drivers and 35 trucks. And we are the residential service provider for cities such as Tiff and Bloomville and New Washington. One of the big things I wanted to talk about tonight is our recycling process. To tell you a bit about it, we run what we call or refer to as single-stream recycling. When you think about recycling, you might think about having to keep everything sorted, like your cardboard here, your plastics here, your paper here, and then recycling them separately. With single-stream recycling, all recyclable items are discarded into a single container, and then we take it to what is called a material recovery facility, or I may refer to it going forward as a MRF, where it is separated and sorted to be baled. And just a quick comparison, I believe it's on the fifth or sixth page, on the sixth slide, it's just a quick visual comparison of a service similar to what Crawford County currently has with the drop-off locations versus what is something similar to what single-stream and how we would prefer to run recycling services. And like I said, from there, the material is taken to a MRF where it is run through some machines using infrared light, magnets, and conveyors to sort the materials by type. Our current recycling facility, our MRF, is located in downtown Columbus next to the fairgrounds. Materials recovered from Bucyrus, just hypothetically speaking, would be taken to our transfer facility in Mansfield before being compacted and then sent to our facility in Columbus. If you ever have any questions or want more information about a recycling process, what we do or what it looks like, we offer tours in the facility throughout the year and also have informational classes to anybody that's interested. The Columbus MRF currently processes about 650 tons of material per day. And like I said earlier, it's a single-stream process, and it uses mechanical sorting to separate materials after the point of collection. And during that process, we use cutting-edge equipment, advanced technology. It takes about 80 employees and 2,530 feet of conveyor belt to keep those materials separated. And just to go into a quick example of what it looks like, we use optical scanners, use infrared light, which each material reflects at a unique angle. Specific angles trigger a burst of air that ejects associated material through the stream. We have five optical scanners in the current MRF. We use eddy currents that use an electromagnetic to repel and remove aluminum cans, disc screens, and are used to separate paper. And we use overhead magnets to remove steel cans. If you're interested, I can send a video to you guys. It's about an eight, I didn't want to bring it too tight. It's about an eight or nine minute video. It shows position by position where each thing is removed and where it goes from there. It's very, I personally think it's very interesting. The sorted material is then sent through a baler, and it makes bales of recyclables weighing up to 2,000 pounds. A picture of that's on Slide 12. With recycling, the two, working in this waste and recycling business, the two questions I often get are, is something recyclable and is it being recycled? We just, I just kind of explained, we are in fact recycling it. And one of the things with our educations, we always like to tell people what all is included in that. Plastics are the first thing. They include common household items like milk jugs, detergent bottles, Coke bottles, things of that nature. And a few years ago, back in 2020, we added tubs to the acceptable items list. So that means like your butter, yogurt, and sour cream containers are now acceptable recycling items from Rumkey. This was brought on due to some new technology that we were able to get that allows us to effectively sort the material. With metal, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's aluminum, steel, and tin cans. On the next page, you'll see glass. We accept both clear and tinted glass. Both jars and bottles are accepted with the caveat of no drinking glasses. The best way to explain that to people is that when you go home, you open a bottle of Budweiser. We want the actual bottle, not the glass you're pouring it into. Just, that's the easiest way I've found to explain it to people. Cartons are also acceptable. We just ask that you remove any straws and/or caps. And of course, paper and cardboard, as you can imagine, with online shopping increasing and becoming more common day by day, this is something, the amount of cardboard we've gotten has increased over years. A new program we just released this past February is the Cup Program. We added paper and plastic cups to our list of acceptable recycling items. We were able to do so by finding multiple end-users that are willing to accept these items for years to come. And when I say cups, I'm kind of, I'm talking about the single-use cups that are in the picture on the slide. With the exception of no, like red solo cups, we, those aren't acceptable right now. They're a different kind of plastic, and they just don't run through the system properly. So another question we get a lot is where does it all go at the end? And like I just mentioned with the cups, Rumkey has contracts with multiple long-term and stable end-users to ensure that we're always able to meet the demand for recyclable material that some of these companies we deal with have. And just to give you some numbers of the material that comes into a MRF, 87% to 90% of that is actually able to be recycled. So about 10% of that is either not recyclable, meaning it was never recyclable to begin with, or it's contaminated and the vendor won't be able to take it and process it and reuse it. And of that, of that 87% to 90%, 99% of that material stays domestic. And of that 99%, 85% to 95% of that stays here in the Midwest. So not only are we doing everything we can to recycle as much as we can, we're also making a conscious effort to keep everything local and in the Midwest. To give you some quick examples of those end-users I was talking about, one of our plastic end-users breaks down, breaks the plastic down to the fiber before reusing it to make drainage tile. Metal cans are just melted down and used to make new cans. And paper and cardboard materials reduced back down to a pulp before being used to make a new paper product. This isn't an exact example, but for instance, if you take an Amazon box and you send it out to be recycled, once it gets to our facility, in about two weeks' time, that box is showing up on somebody else's doorstep again. That's the kind of turnaround time we look at. And the thing we're most excited about at Rumkey, the thing we hang our hat on is glass recycling. All glass that Rumkey receives is sent to our own glass recycling facility in Dayton, where we further break it down, separate it by color, and is shipped to be used in fiberglass insulation or other various uses. We're always interested in glass because we're the only glass reci, or we're the only recycler in the area, rather, with our own glass recovery facility. So you may hear passing by people talking about glass isn't recyclable, glass isn't effective to be recycled. With Rumkey, that's not the case. We want as much glass as we can get our hands on. And we recycle about 60,000 to 70,000 tons of glass annually. Another reason we're here tonight is there's, Rumkey is growing. Big, big things are happening in our world. On February 8th, we announced a $50 million investment into a 25-acre property in Columbus that will include about a 200,000-square-foot state-of-the-art material recovery facility. The project's expected to be completed in 2024, and it'll be, by the time it's completed, it'll be the fifth-largest MRF in the country. On Slide 26, it's just kind of a quick overhead look of what the inside of the building will look like. It'll have 12 robots, 18 optical scanners, two ballistic separators, and it'll have two shifts of about 60 people total. We're referring to it as a resource center. It'll have 30,000-square-foot tipping floor to ensure all material is contained inside the building, 4,000-square-foot research and development space, a 4,000-square-foot career, development, and education center, and is being built with tours in mind as a way to help enhance the educational experience. Just a few more details on Slide 28. It will feature solar panels on the roof. We've formed a community advisory committee with people that live in the direct neighborhood where we will be building this facility. They've built a committee to make sure they have impact on the project and are receiving any benefits and job opportunities that may come from this project. And we're looking to refer to it as a resource center rather than a MRF because we want it to be more than just a place where recycling occurs. We almost want it to be a destination of sorts in Columbus with a variety of different things taking place. And with that, we'll be partnering with Ohio State to support sustainability and circular economy initiatives. And we'll also be working with COSI in Columbus to ensure steam, or rather STEM, learning opportunities within the facility. And that's, in five, six minutes, that is Rumkey, as quick as one can possibly explain it and as much depth as possible. And now that I've done that, I kind of want to discuss the main reason I'm here tonight, how we can, how we can help Bucyrus. Myself and Eric stopped in at the mayor's office as an introductory meeting back in November. And when we left that meeting, we told them we'd reach out if we ever thought Rumkey got to a point where there was a way Rumkey could help Bucyrus in a way that was mutually beneficial. And we think we're at that point, and here we are. So the first thing I want to discuss on Slide 31 is your current trash setup to kind of compare what we can offer versus what you have. Right now, what you have is trash picked up one time a week, and residents are allowed up to six bags of trash per week. Although, talking to both the mayor and the Safety Service Director, it sounds like a majority of the residents probably don't use all six bags. There are no larger or bulky items that can be put out to curb without extra cost. And all recycling items must be taken to a Crawford County drop-off location. And at those locations, the residents are responsible for sorting the recyclable material. So that means, and to service the trash and recycling services for the community, the city is responsible for maintaining and staffing those trucks. It's the city that has to deal with every missed pickup claim. And while there is a recycling option, it can be modernized and brought up more to date. And as for, with the recycling, as many people as there are now that are passionate about recycling and want to recycle and care about recycling, there's also an equal amount of people that want to recycle but only do it out of conveniency. They care about recycling, they want to recycle, but they're not willing to hold on to like a week's worth of cardboard so they can throw it in the back of their car and wait in line at the county drop-off. So instead, they just throw it in the trash. We're looking to alleviate that problem. What we'd like to do is have Bucyrus enter into a contract with a private waste and recycling hauler to service both the trash and recycling for the community. Allowing us or any private hauler to do so would provide a variety of benefits to Bucyrus, including a consistent trash removal service, curbside, single-stream recycling service, large item pickup included with that service, and it could eventually down the road lead to potential savings for the city itself. So talking to Jeff, the Safety Service Director, a few weeks ago, there's always, there's always that looming charge of the next garbage truck or the next repair for truck that's always hanging over their head and the maintenance costs that come with it. With a private hauler buying that truck, those maintenance costs, they no longer exist. It would be our customer service team answering the requests for extra pickups or anything related to the waste removal services, answering questions that your residents may have. And it would provide residents with a significantly easier recycling option with the single-stream curbside recycling. On Slide 33, I kind of broke down what exactly Rumkey could do for your community. Instead of six bags, we'd have each resident have one 95-gallon trash cart to be serviced one time a week. And we'd also have one 65-gallon, single-stream recycling cart that could either be serviced once a week or once every other week, entirely dependent on what you feel is the best, what is the best for your community. And we'd also offer affordable renting options for additional carts as needed. So if you do have somebody that does use all six bags plus some, we do have options for them so that they aren't feeling left out of this solution. And then with these services, we include a variety of bulk pickup items, options that could be included as well. I've kind of, I've kind of touched on it a few times, but curbside recycling, we really do think could benefit every resident in the city. Truth be told, we wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't think curbside recycling could help every resident in the city. Like I said earlier, our recycling program strives to make everything easier. Being single-stream means that everything can go into one container or the same cart. You don't have to deal with the hassle of hauling everything to the drop-off and risk there being a long line or everything already being overfilled. It adds cups and tubs to the list of items your community can recycle. And honestly, the most important thing to us is that every item being recycled is one less item going into the landfill. And everything we can do to divert material from going to the landfill benefits everyone. When we met with the mayor and kind of brought this up as like a rough draft idea to him a few weeks ago, one of his concerns was whether or not we'd be able to offer curbside service to residents who place their alleys in back alleys or tight squeezes. When we meet with communities for the first time, this often is a main concern for them. Best thing I can tell you is there's nothing in Bucyrus we haven't seen before. If we can navigate some of those crazy alleys and back streets in downtown Columbus, we're almost positive we can service everything in Bucyrus. On Slide 37, I get a quick side-by-side comparison for you of what your current service looks like versus what a potential Rumkey service would look like. Your current service, again, just to review, one week, one time a week service for six bags. We offer the same thing, but instead of those bags, it's 95-gallon carts for recycling. Instead of the source separation at the drop-off locations, households would have a recycling cart they could throw all of their items into and be serviced at the curb once a week or once every other week, depending on what you feel is the best need for your community. And then we have a variety of bulk item pickup options that could be included as well. Some opportunities for Bucyrus. There are any concerns about this costing people jobs with the city. We're more than happy to hire any driver that can pass a proper background test and drug screenings. We also entertain the idea of purchasing any trucks and equipment the city currently uses to service the city. And something we've started doing recently is potential of revenue sharing on recyclables recovered in the community. So there's, we're always working to, we're always striving to work with the communities and make sure it's a mutual relationship. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you, thank you all for letting me come in this evening. Are there any, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Yep, appreciate it. Very informing. Okay. Next is the CMT Airport and Engineers. Jeff, do you know if they're here or not, the airport people?
No. No. We had reached out for qualifications. We have to do it every five years. And this was the year we had to send it out. And we got from two companies, we got their qualifications and called some references, and we basically would like to stay with CMT for the next five years. They've been very good with the auditor's office, communication with the grants. I don't know if the auditor would like to add anything, but I think they would be, to keep them on would be a good thing.
Okay. Okay. So what do we do on that? We got to pass that at one of our meetings?
Yeah, you can just pass it at the next council meeting. The legislation's ready, so.
Do we need legislation to, what's that? Yeah, we have to request legislation. It needs to be an emergency, you think?
It don't have to be.
We're going to request legislation for us approving CMT as the airport engineer?
I'll make a motion to request legislation to keep CMT as the airport.
Okay. Aaron makes a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Brenton makes it. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, fortified ordinance 927.09. What do you, Jeff, what is that? Is that the stormwater ordinance?
I do believe so.
Okay, we have to pass out, or pass on, get legislation on that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. We had that presented to us, I think, at the last meeting by Tim Wood. Come in, talk to us about it. Everything's pretty well set on that. Now, you had something you wanted to add to that at the last meeting, did you not?
So there was two different pieces. We passed the one at the last meeting. And then we have to pass the second one, so I'll do legislation on that one. And then the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board, or Stormwater Usage Appeals Board, we would also need legislation allowing them to hear appeals for the illegal and illicit discharge. So we would need two pieces of legislation. One for the Stormwater Usage Appeals Board, granting them the authority to hear appeals of the illegal and illicit discharge. And then legislation doing the second half of what Tim Wood suggested.
Okay, so we need to get legislation for that, correct?
Do those need to be two separate?
Two separate ones?
They would be two separate.
Two separate motions, though, or?
You could do one motion, but two separate pieces of legislation.
I will give a motion for requesting to have the second half of the legislation typed up and the legislation to allow the appeals board to hear the stormwater.
Steve seconds it. Any more discussion?
Would those be emergency pieces?
Oh, by emergency.
By emergency, okay. You want to second the emergency? Okay.
Sorry, I meant that.
Okay, we got that motion. We need, any more discussion on it? If not, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. OPWC. Jeff?
Yes, we have Dylan here from McKeever's. And Jeff Dunn is here also because the next three or four projects, he's going to go over to give you guys an update.
All right, so first we'll talk about the OPWC project. As everybody probably knows, prices have been going up on items. And this is very evident in pipe and concrete structures. The OPWC project, we had originally budgeted for Bucyrus portion of the project to be $221,336.50. We would like to request to move some money around from different funds to cover the increases in costs that we project for the project after talking to several contractors. A rundown of those requests that we would like to make for moves. We would like to request to move $112,000 from the water line replacement fund. There is currently $115,000 in that fund. And we would like to request to move $22,500 from the sewer fund outside contracts. This gives the total project cost of $540,836.50, with $185,000 of that being OPWC's grant portion.
Dylan, you might want to go over how you're going to put this out to bid because now it's all-inclusive.
Yes, so originally, we had planned to break this project up into the water line portions of the project and the sewer portions of the project. With the overages that we're anticipating on this project, we're planning to bid it all as one in order to eliminate fixed costs that would be doubled by breaking it up into multiple different projects.
So what we need to do is to approve that to go on in our, so we need a motion to approve this to go on to finance, I believe.
Yes.
Motion, anybody want to make a motion to do that?
And this will be legislation that needs to be as an emergency? Yeah, also. So we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? You got anything else you want to say?
I've not.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, good enough. Okay, you here for the off-weight?
Yep.
That's yours.
In the budget, we had put to do the path up around the off-weight, which hasn't been done since the off-weight was put in. And we had it in the budget at $125,000. But the new cost that McKeever has is $90,000. So we were just going to ask to go out to bid at $91,000. He's got a contingency already built in.
So we already had it sub-sided at $125,000? That's a lot less?
Yes. Yeah, I know.
So on that project, we had originally planned for the city to rent a grinder to grind up the asphalt millings from the street program to be able to use for the path. Since then, Jeff Dunn has talked with the county. And since we haul most of the millings to the county for them to use, they said we can use the already ground-up millings for this project. So we saved that, that portion of money.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? We need a motion to go ahead and move out to finance also?
Does that need to be an emergency?
I'm requesting legislation. You're just moving it to finance. It wouldn't be emergency.
Okay, we're moving it to finance. Need a second? Any more discussion? Yep, seeing none. All those in favor, you can sign. Aye. Okay, Jeff, what's Partridge Road?
I'll turn it over to Dylan.
Okay, so Partridge Road water line extending from Stetzer down to Lincoln Highway. Original, we need to...
Originally, we had $380,000 that we passed legislation for in November, December. And now that the cost have went up, we're going to have to draw up new legislation. And Dylan will explain how we want to try. Since we're running later on the county projects with the water lines, we have a way to fund Partridge now. Because we're, I don't know, what are we, six months behind on county?
Yeah, so the county projects were delayed because with their funding, they had to go through an RFQ process. That delayed us four or five months. So the Osceola water line that is in the budget will not be built this year. It will be a project that's built next year. So we would like to reallocate that money from the Osceola water line to be used for the Partridge water line. In addition to that, based on our current estimate, we need to request to move $45,000 from the water line outside. from the water line outside contracts to the Partridge Road water line project.
So you're gonna need $45,000 from outside contractors on the waterside?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yes.
When is that project gonna get? When is it gonna get started, do you know?
That project is at EPA currently. As soon as EPA approves the plans, I would say in the next month and a half, we'll be ready for that project to go out to bid.
Okay. So we will, I suppose that's gonna be done as an emergency on that one.
Yes.
But you?
We're at the movement.
You just gotta move it to it?
Yeah, just to, just to move it to finance.
Move it to finance, yeah. Need a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
Your second?
Second.
Any more discussion on that? Seeing none, vote usual sign? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Warren Street. Is that more money?
All right, more money. But, so, original, original budget for that project that we did back in November originally was $120,500. That was split between the storm sewer fund and the sanitary sewer fund. We would like to request to move $29,000 even from the CSO 17 repair budget item. That project will not be constructed this year. We do have it in the budget for doing the engineering design on it, but construction will not likely happen until next year. And I believe there was $40,000 in that budget item.
Okay. Any more, anything on that? So we need to have a motion to move that to finance also? Need a motion? Steve makes a motion to move that to finance, need a second?
Second.
Brendan makes that. Brendan? All those in favor, usual sign?
Aye.
Okay, any more public participation for anybody? Seeing none? Need a motion to adjourn? Need a motion to adjourn, need a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at 6:33.
Today is Thursday, April 7th, 6:35 PM, and this is the Health and Safety Committee meeting.
I'll call Health and Safety to order at 6:35 PM. Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever and myself, Chair are all present. First item up is public participation. Does anybody have anything for Health and Safety that they would like to address?
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street. I just wanted to address the draft minutes for the Health and Safety meeting from Tuesday, March 17th, 2022. Specifically, the one line item that talks about, I'll just quote it. It says, "Wireball excused himself from the meeting." I don't think that line accurately reflects what exactly happened there as far as the excusing or the unexcusing. So I guess I would, I would just like to ask council to, or not council, but the committee to maybe change that to a more accurate, to reflect what actually happened in the meeting. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? All right. Dan, you'd ask for the floor?
Yeah, I just, this is sort of a public service announcement, I guess. I walked over on the north end of town here, and I'm not trying to belittle any business. This is, this business is out of Columbus, and they may be reputable, but I don't believe so. But I walked in on my mom this afternoon, and the guy's gonna come and clean her carpet for her tomorrow.
Yeah. Listen, I've seen him in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so he did not have a permit, and he was not registered here. I went to both the police department and zoning, looked up his, just happened to look up his, on Better Business Bureau, and you can get on there, I'm not gonna read all these, but on Better Business Bureau, he had a F rating. The last complaint was in 2021. He had told me while I was standing there that Warren Buffett had just bought their company, and he was doing a lot of, he was gonna do a lot of things. Well, this, don't laugh, because Warren Buffett did own this company for 35 years, but he sold it. So that was, I mean, he was just kind of way out there. So it's been reported, police, I would not, I'm not letting my mom have her carpet cleaned tomorrow, I guess, so. So I just wanted to put that out there for everybody. And they may be legitimate business, but if you are a business in town, you need to come up and register with the, with the, up here in zoning and, or if you're a contractor, you have to have a contractor registration. So that's the way we do business, to keep these older people safe. Okay, so that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Dan. All right, you have in front of you the minutes from Thursday, March 17th. You've heard Mr. Fankhauser's request, so I'll open it up to the committee if you would like to approve these or request a change in approval. I'll?
I make the motion to accept the minutes.
I have a motion for Mr. McKeever to accept as presented.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Wireball, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. All right, the next topic is receivership, and we're going to hear from Mr. Jared Miller now at this time, who's gonna talk a little bit about the concept and proposal for receivership.
Yes, thank you. My name's Jared Miller, 133 South Sandusky Street. So basically, we have a little bit of an issue here in town with two things that receivership will help with. The first is, we really have a lack of housing. Anytime a housing goes up for rent or for sale, there's plenty of interest. There's usually 20, 30 people trying to rent one property. So what we see here in Besire's is we have a lot of empty properties that are vacant, that are nuisances, and we need to reutilize those properties to make them something that people can live in, something that will sort of reduce that demand for the housing that we have. Number two, obviously nuisance properties, they're something that you never wanna see in a city. You have sort of that broken window theory. So if you have a property next to you that has a broken window, it attracts a lot of things. Number one, it's gonna reduce the value of your property. Number two, usually when you have properties that are starting to be a nuisance and have that broken window, you're gonna see more violence, more crime in that area. So what receivership allows the city to do is go in, get these properties, get the nuisance addressed, get it taken care of, and get them in hands of property owners that are going to take care of the property and improve it and make it something that can be used for both the citizens of Besire's and also not be nuisance. So, sort of explains the process. Do you guys have any questions, I guess, or do you want me to get into more of the process and how it works, or?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, great. So the way it works is, the city will go through their normal process of determining if a property is a nuisance. Typically, they have their inspector go out, cite the property, note the issues with it. The person has an opportunity to remedy that. If they don't remedy, then they can refer that case to the court, where the court will take a look and they'll follow a complaint. And once again, they'll give them, the property owner a chance to remedy the situation. If that property owner does not, what they'll do is they'll instruct them that it's gonna be placed in receivership. Receiver basically would take over the property and, like I said, remedy it. You really have two different, or, well, three different properties, three different type of property owners that will fall under this. Number one, you're gonna have your sort of owner occupants. These are people that maybe for one reason or another, maybe they're elderly, maybe they're incapable of repairing the property. These people are not what we want to have as a receivership. This is where we're gonna have other opportunities. So we're gonna work with places like United Way, Community Day Action, VA, if they have veteran benefits, and help them get the resources to fix up their property. This might be as simple as talking to the neighbors and saying, hey, are you willing to go over and help them clean up their property? Maybe it's just trash removal, things like that. So we're not trying to kick somebody out of their house. That's not the intent of receivership. It's to get them the resources in that situation to clean up their property and help it not be a nuisance in the city. The second form of people that we see in receivership are repeat offenders. These are the people that, usually are landlords, that just do enough to their property to get it in compliance for a short time. But continually, month after month or year after year, we're seeing the same person, the same property come back as a nuisance. A lot of times what happens with these are, you refer them to receivership, the person goes, talks to an attorney, they find out that this is a real thing. This is something that you could get your property taken away and sold if you don't take care of your property. So that's, that's where in those situations, they're going to take it seriously. They're gonna actually fix up their property right versus just sort of the slap on the wrist that they've been receiving to date. The third form that we see is what we call zombie properties. This is a property that either has an out of town owner that bought this for tax deduction, had no intentions of ever utilizing the property, just used it for depreciation. Or you have, usually they're in some sort of foreclosure process, you know, they're sort of in that foreclosure limbo. And what that means is that a property owner defaulted, the, they were under the impression that they gave it back to the bank or the bank has the property. The bank never actually puts it in their name. They never title it in their name. These properties can sit for years like that, and there's no real action by a bank, there's no action by the property owner, no one really knows who's responsible for the maintenance and upkeep. So this allows, this is where we see, I guess, the most valuable use of the receivership is when you have either these zombie properties or these out of town owners or the foreclosure limbos. And it allows us to get those properties that have been sitting for a long time as vacant properties and nuisance and make them something that's usable. So, did I give a little bit? I can get into more of, you know, what we can use for, what Ohio revised code citations we utilize for this, if you'd like. Okay. Yeah, so once we have?
Yes. I don't know that they need the hyper technical details, but the funding behind all of this, so the city would be contributing how much money?
Yeah, so that's one of the advantages of the receivership. It requires no funding from the city. This is done purely with private money. It's done through the court system and a property manager. It's not something that requires any city funding. Any other questions?
How many? What cities are you in currently?
Yeah, so the receivership I work for, they actually are in, I think, five or six counties in the state of Ohio currently. I actually am here in Besire, some local, but we have any, several counties, sort of like in the Franklin County, Zanesville area as well, and then also some stuff up north as well, so.
How long have they been operating?
I'd say, and I apologize, I don't know exact dates, but I, I mean, at least three years that I'm aware of, I think even a little bit longer. Receivership is a relatively new principle. It's not something that was utilized in the past, but through the necessity of needing to take care of these properties, it's become more and more common. In the Cleveland area, it's gotten to the point where it's sort of the main means of taking care of nuisance properties.
Lisa, also, if you had a question?
How do we know that the receivership would do any differently than the out of town owner? I mean, what's the guarantee that you're actually gonna fix up and maintain that property?
Yeah, great question. So the biggest thing with receivership is, it is a, they're an agent of the court. So they can be held liable by the court, they're responsible to the court. So it is something that you have a person, number one, it'd likely be myself, if, I'd be appointed receiver, I'd be here in Besire's. But it is something that you have a lot more accountability because they are working for the court. So everything has to be reported, and it's just like any case, there are timeframes, there are strict requirements that have to go into it.
Which are the same things, though, that the owners of the properties go through? I'm, I guess I'm just wondering what the difference is.
No problem. Yes.
You're not trying to be rude at all?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Trying to understand.
Yeah, so a lot of times what happens is these property owners, they get a nuisance, but it really never goes anywhere. So there's no actual court case, it's just a city violation that's a nuisance. And then it, there's no one that ever really follows through with it or makes sure that things get done when it's the zombie type properties. So.
So once it goes into the receivership, then you own the property, it's been taken physically away from the owners, and you're held responsible to the court to maintain it? I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding that right.
No problem. Yeah, so there's a little bit of a nuance, I guess I'll point out. It isn't ownership, it's actually possession. So what that means is that we have possession, we have the rights to, you know, accept rents, we have the rights to break contracts to build and maintain and do things with the property.
Without actually ever owning it?
Correct. Yes.
So who owns it?
Who owns it, then?
So the property still owns it, so it isn't taken away from ownership.
Paying taxes?
Yep, so that'd be the responsibility of the receivership is to pay all the liens and fees and responsibilities.
So why are you doing? I'm not, I'm sorry, I just, I mean, what, to make the rent? I mean, to make that rent money, I'm understand, I don't understand why, what you're getting out of it.
Yeah, so receivership is paid through the court. So it is something that you are, you do get paid. So it's not just something that you volunteer in.
I understand that. Here's what I see. It appears it's a company who's profiting off misfortunes of others, if you're just looking at the owner-operator aspect. Now, I, you have valid points, and I agree with you on the zombie properties.
Yeah, we have.
And the, the out of town slum lords type of situation. I totally agree with you and understand that. But if you're just looking at individual owner-operator properties and these people just fall on misfortune, I think you're really treading, you're treading on personal property rights that are protected by the Constitution. And you got two types of people in the world, people that wanna be left alone and people that won't leave you alone. And it sounds to me that first category, owner-operators, a lot of people wanna be left alone. It sounds like maybe you're not leaving people alone.
Yeah. And the thing I can show you with receivership is, these property owners get plenty of opportunities to remedy. It's not something where you're gonna find out, you know, that, oh, by the way, 30 days ago, somebody took your property in receivership. You're gonna have several opportunities, whether it be through the city violation where you had a chance to remedy, or through the court proceedings themselves. It is a court proceeding, you will be served with notification, you'll be served.
So this is a corporation that you work for?
No, no, receiver is actually a person, so.
So this is what you do?
So I, I'm actually a property manager here in town.
So the person who has the receivership is responsible to pay the taxes, the insurance, the upkeep, just as if they own the property?
Correct. I think I had a question in the back.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, there's another company already doing that here in town now. I know five properties that they acquired, and they're sleeping a rundown. I know people that have tried to buy these properties. It's a company out of California, and they won't sell them to nobody. And what they're doing is, is wait till the market's high to make a bunch of money off of it. So you're gonna tell me you're doing this for free for the kindness of Besire's? Because what you're explaining is exactly what that company out of California is doing. They're hanging on to this property, won't sell it to the locals, and then they sell it in a bundle, and then they make millions.
Yeah, so I guess I'll address your question in a couple of different ways. So the first is, by no means is this out of the kindness of my heart. This is a business that will make money.
Exactly. You're here to make money.
Yep, so that's.
You didn't even hear from us.
Well, Jim, can you let him finish? You asked your question, let him answer, please.
Thank you.
Yep. So the second part of your question is, you're a business out of California. That's, that's not a receivership. What that is, is a corporation or a company that bought the property to make profits in a different means. That's not done through the court system, that's not done through receivership, that's done as a business buying a property in order to make money off the reset.
Those properties were taken from people that were derelict with their properties and from banks to where they were foreclosed on. And they came in and took those from the banks. And now those properties are just sitting there, and nobody can do anything with us.
Yep, so that was done through foreclosure process, is how it's taken from the property owner.
You can't sell them, right?
So then, so then the, it was taken from the property owner through a foreclosure process, and then it process, and then it was bought from the bank, from a private, or from a company, bought it.
From my opinion, it sounds like the same thing, but, okay.
No problem. I can assure you it is different. This is something that is done through the courts in order to take care of nuisance properties, not create them.
Okay. I might not understand, you really, you can't sell it?
So, a receiver can sell property.
Okay.
Yes.
How can you sell it if you don't own it?
So, the, what happens is, the courts give the receiver the rights to not only, but to...
It's a franchise.
So, they give the property, our manager or the receivership, rights to not only possess property and in fact run it, make sure that the fees are paid and things like that, but they also give them the right to sell it as well.
Terry Spiegel?
Okay, so, you get it all fixed up, the original owner wants it back. Does that person, does he have to pay what you paid for to go ahead and fix it up? Does he get it back? Or what's the deal with that if he wants it back?
Yeah, so, absolutely. So, a property owner does have several chances to get the property back, up until, I think, even after the sale. Usually, there's a time period where they could pay the sale price and get the property back. So, this isn't something where we take it away and they have no chance to get it. I mean, they can pay for the remedies to take care of the nuisances and get the property back. Everything is done with the expectation that really what needs addressed is making sure the nuisance is taken care of. If they want the property back, we're not trying to take the property from them.
Mike Castor, you had a question?
Yeah, just two-fold, and I have a feeling what you're trying to describe, I can help some of the other people. You, as a receiver, everything you do is through court order. The court actually is controlling the property, assigning it to you as a receiver to manage it and make, take care of it and do what the court directs, am I correct? And this, what you're roughly describing, doesn't sound like much different than receivership or bankruptcy.
Yeah, Mike...
Am I correct? So, if we can cross that bridge, the receivership is not an unknown thing to the courts. The courts use receiverships for different things, so, but am I correct that you aren't going to be able to do anything too much without a court order or court correction?
Yeah, Mike, you are correct. Everything is done through the courts. So, anytime we need to make repairs, it's all submitted to the courts for their approval. Any of the sales have to be approved through the court. Everything that's done by receivers is through the court, and it does require the judge's approval.
And just for the people here, my background is of the sheriff's office, so, that's why I mentioned bankruptcy and so, we deal, it's not usually on the sideline stuff, but we're usually sitting here and quite aware of receiverships when different things happen to different people, different companies for various reasons, and the court steps in and place whatever into a receivership to get this matter resolved and do whatever it needs to, and including sale of whatever the property is of. Am I correct?
Yeah, you are correct, and thank you very much for the explanation.
Thanks. I got it.
So, what, is there like a name of this, the receivership?
Or is it just you, you doing it as an individual?
Yeah, so, it is a person.
It's a person, so...
Yeah, what happens is, you have to apply to the court to be a receiver. You're approved on a per-property basis, so, this isn't something where a person applies and they are the receiver for all of Crawford County. You have to apply per-property. You have to demonstrate, number one, that you have a plan for construction, that you have the funds available for construction, that you are a qualified property manager, and then you have to take an oath. You are an agent of the court, so it requires you have to take an oath, you have to do everything through the court system.
So, do you, do you own properties in Crawford County?
I do.
LLC?
I do.
Okay, I thought so. And he asked where, where you operated, and he just gave a lot of areas, but I didn't hear of like any cities or any courts or anything that you had worked through.
Yeah, and the reason I am, I guess I didn't give a clear explanation. So, this is, the receivership, I have sort of a mentor that works out of Columbus area, and they have about five or six counties that they work out of. It includes Franklin County, I think Muskingo County, I want to say the Zanesville area, I think it goes Montgomery County.
So, you're just starting out at this?
You're exactly right. So, I have sort of a mentor that is walking me through this. They have all of the documents. Obviously, they have several judges, several attorneys that they've worked through, and they're basically helping me get started in this area.
Okay. Yep.
Lisa, also, do you have a question?
Dan, tell them about the house next door to your mom's.
I don't know what about it. I heard they had the walls out the other day.
They did. I thought maybe, that's why I thought maybe this guy was here, I thought maybe he was working on it.
No, no, that's somebody else, that's through, Kevin knows more about that.
Mike Castor?
I do, I heard the question, maybe I mentioned it earlier on. What, like I said, there are receiverships somewhere, but what starts your action on these houses? Is it the city bringing an action because the house is sitting vacant? What actually starts the action against the house that may go into receivership?
Yeah, good question, Mike. So, basically, what happens is, the city files a nuisance complaint. Like I said, they give the adequate time to remedy. If the property owner hasn't remedied, then they will file an action with the court. That is basically a document saying that we would like to put this property in receivership in order to take care of the nuisances on it. At that point, the court usually reaches out to the property owner and lets them know that this has been filed. They'll give them adequate time to remedy as well. If they do not remedy, that's when the court will start the action where they would actually put the property in receivership.
But the city is actually, the investigators start an initial action on the house to bring it to whoever's attention asking for the receivership order?
Yes. So, most commonly, it is a city. Really, anyone can start a receivership request with the court. It could be adjacent property owner, I think, mentioned the property next to Dan's mother's house. So, a neighbor, she could have brought the action as well. But typically, it is the city just because they have the most benefit.
So, do you evict the people that are living there?
If the property is such disrepair that it's not decent, safe, and sanitary and can't be brought up to that condition with people living in it, it wouldn't be eviction, it would be more of a trying to get them into a different property, a decent, safe, and sanitary condition. I don't, I wouldn't look at this as something where we're coming in trying to, you know, kick people out of their house in order to fix them up to make profit. The idea is to get people in safe conditions.
Robert Taylor, do you have another question?
I do, and it's a couple of different. One is, when you begin fixing up projects, it all gets cleared through the court with repairs, correct?
Correct.
Is there any stipulations that would require you to use local contractors? Because I think if it's about benefiting the city, that would probably be something to look at. Two, not, and I'm not trying to be rude at all, sir.
You're fine.
I think hearing your idea, I think is actually a pretty good idea. Why are you here talking to city council? Do you need their approval? Do you need them to, some sort of legislation to enable you to work within the city, or is it just to bring awareness?
Yeah, and actually, I'll address both questions. The first one is the local contractors. There is no requirement to do that, but I'll tell you, that's what's going to happen. I personally have multiple properties here in town, have local contractors, everything's going to be done local as much as possible. It's just how I operate, I mean, but there is no requirement of that, it's just how it is. Your second question regarding why am I here, it is purely informative.
Okay.
These people are the ones that are going to get the questions. So, this is to let them know, this is, this is what we're doing, this is what we have planned, and to make sure that they're informed, so that way, number one, I guess, the general public has an opportunity to hear it as well if you're here, and number two, if they do get questions, they at least have some familiarity with it and know what's going on.
Or Dan sees you out, walking around, things like that, ask you?
Yep, so...
All right. Thank you very much, Jared.
Yep, no problem. Thank you. The next topic is the DORA application, and before, I've got a couple of different
things we're going to do first. I want to bring everybody up to speed, and Brian, feel free to jump in here on this. You know, this was started last year with Mr. Ratliff, and the application was kind of lost in the paper shuffle of one guy leaving a position and a new guy coming into it. Not everybody knew whose job was to do what, so, trying to get this back rolling again, and I'll let you kind of take over with where we were at on the public notice and everything like that.
Yeah, so, in the newspaper, we had put that April 7th was our public hearing, come to our council meeting, discuss it. I brought it up at the April 7th meeting, there was a large audience, nobody discussed it. We haven't received any letters, any correspondence, any phone calls, either at the mayor's office or at the clerk's office concerning the DORA application. Nobody has come to the mayor's office or the clerk's office to inspect the DORA application. And so, at this point, it would be up to this committee to decide if they wanted legislation. There was an error in the application indicating that we had over 35,000, and so, if we do request legislation, we also would have to amend that to reflect that we're a city of under 35,000.
Does that application need to be resubmitted with that error?
No. You can amend that application pursuant to the DORA statutes.
Okay. At this time, Jim Richardson, you had said you had some things you wanted to say, I'll invite you to do that now.
Yeah. Jim Richardson, 316 River Street. I watched the meeting. I didn't know that we were supposed to be talking about the DORA Tuesday night, and then I heard that it was going to be tonight, that's why I'm here. I didn't put any public input in on this yet. You just said that the mayor hasn't heard anything, I didn't realize that I could take this to the mayor, so that's why I'm here tonight. Now, the people that live here in Bussiris, a lot of people have said they love living here because of the safe schools, caring people, and all-around good community, and it is. It really is a good little town. But with that being said, I'm here to discuss the DORA. Now, the way I understand it, it's designated outdoor refreshment area. I want to make sure that that's what we're talking about. Now, I've talked to a couple of council members about this door because I didn't understand it, and some of the council members told me that, you know, times are changing and that we need to keep up with the times. It's one of the reasons why they want this door, because bigger cities are doing this. And I'm going to tell you what, maybe times are changing, but there are two things that's not changed. One is DUI, driving under the influence, and two is minors. If we have this DORA uptown, we have a greater risk of somebody drinking a little bit too much, getting in a vehicle, and possibly causing an accident, hurting themselves or hurting someone else. Now, we're all been minors at one time, I know I was, and now, we're double-folding the chance of a minor getting his hand on alcohol. Teenagers love to get a hold of alcohol. I've seen it many times. Happened in the 70s, happened in the 80s, it's still going on today. Now, I don't feel that we need to have this DORA, because I don't want anybody's child to get killed by a drunk driver. I don't want anybody's child to get a hold of that alcohol. I feel that the best thing to do is drinking belongs in the bars, the beer gardens, so that we can keep our community safe and our children safe. I don't care what other cities do. I really don't care. I don't care if Columbus has a DORA, Mansfield, whoever. I don't want alcohol on my streets in public, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, I want to point out a couple of things, just Jim, because I was involved in some of the early discussion of this, and I'm going to ask Jesse Ferner to speak on this. We did reach out to Findlay and Tiffin Police Departments, and Jesse, do you remember the number we were told what was their increase in incidents related to the DORA? Both communities said...
Sure, Kevin. Both communities combined with zero.
Zero.
That's fine. You know, God bless them.
And I guess the point I want to make is, there is, we're looking at, we're doing some research, we're trying to compare things. You have the, you know, potential to bring some more new businesses into town, so, I mean, there's...
I agree and I don't agree. You know, it's not going to bring businesses into town. The only thing that brings businesses into town is the economics about this situation. What's it going to cost them to set up a business here? What's it going to cost them to pay their employees? You know, what's the cost of living in this town, one they're going to have to pay out?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, you know, just like a new park is not going to bring business to town, and public drinking uptown, I feel, is not going to bring businesses to this town. I've heard more compliments about this little town, and I've actually had people that have moved from bigger cities to here because they feel safer in this town, because it's a small community.
True.
And it's been this way for years, and that's all I'm trying to point out, is I'd like to keep our town safe. You know, we don't need to add more turmoil to our city, seriously. But that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So, Jesse, go ahead.
Do I need to go up there?
Please do.
All right. Should do things the right way. Jesse Ferner, 118 West Southern Avenue, Bussiris, Ohio. I don't want anybody's kid to get hit by a drunk driver either, and I did do a lot of work on this project, and I really don't care what they're doing in other towns either, but I just wanted to be here to answer questions the best that I can, and I'll give a quick summary of the DORA and the application for those that don't understand it. The DORA would ease or make more accessible outdoor dining in front of liquor holding, liquor permit-holding establishments. It would allow such establishments to serve alcoholic beverages in a plastic cup pursuant to the law within a designated area during certain hours. Creation of the DORA would relieve these establishments of current requirements for fencing around a dining area. Signage, sanitation, and safety requirements would be established by the city. The DORA would provide the ability for individuals to walk within the DORA boundaries with an alcoholic beverage purchased from a liquor permit-holding establishment during permitted hours. The authority would be limited to the temporary dates of, and then we would continue our application with our new dates that will need updated on the current application with what we'd like them to be. The boundaries are like this. They're kind of shaped like a tap, which I think is kind of cool. Perry Street is up here, there's Mary Street. They encompass 11 permit-holding businesses, all of them agreed and want to be part of it. This is Pizanello's way down here, this is the Elk's way up here, we have a couple of our veterans' clubs. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm, is it going to be shut down now in Rattler's Festival?
There is a part in this application where the city can request it be shut down for any event or any certain reason.
Yeah, I can see people stumbling down the middle of the street, a bunch of kids as well.
Sure.
The official position of the festival, I could take a moment to speak as the festival director. The official statement or official stance from the festival is, we do not want it active during the festival. We would appreciate it, but not to be active.
That's the only thing I could see. I'm on a lemon shake-up diet during festivals, so...
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, that's nice, that's like Norman's niche, they had to create that in and do all that corruption deal.
And as the Chamber of Tourism Director, I think having Shine's Art Park right there with the area to go, Norman's niche, it's just kind of nice for our concerts and stuff like that.
You go sit down and have a drink.
Right, right.
Jesse, could you hit again on the topic? I just want to make sure that people understand, I can't grab a beer out of my refrigerator and drive uptown and get out of my car and walk down the streets with that. Where does that, where does that beer have to come from?
You can, but you're breaking the law, you're breaking the law, and our fine law enforcement has said that they feel like they do have enough manpower to handle this situation, and that in the discussions we had, they would commit extra manpower during shift change when they had extra bodies out there. So, there's that. Your cups would have to look something kind of like this. You can go 12 or 16 ounces. I heard from Pressline, who has recently finished up their emergency DORA that they finished up, that 12 were bad, the establishments requested 16 ounces because you could barely barely hold a beer in that one, and that equals about one beer or two glasses of wine. You can't carry more than two drinks out. You cannot carry a drink from Bakers into Norman's. You have to throw away your cup before going into the new establishment. There is a cost tied into the cup, and that money goes back to the city, however they would like to designate it.
I have a question, I have some comments. First is, I've got two DUIs. They were all coming from a bar. So, this legislation is not going to change, in my opinion. I've been serving, I was about fourteen. I don't have as much anymore. But she mentioned people building fences, gates. I work in Columbus, Delaware, and there's a lot of these businesses that are, they're here at DORA. They're putting bi-fold doors in, they're putting garage doors, and it is a big attraction for people to come to those establishments, sit outside, have a drink, eat dinner. Now, again, anytime alcohol is involved, you're always going to have instances of whatever that happens, but I don't see that it's going to increase or decrease by passing this legislation to allow better business opportunities for the city. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Mine's a couple questions, although a statement. I'm not against making alcohol any easier for underage people to get, or even people who do drink too much. That boils down to a simple thing of common sense and logic by the liquor establishments, policing their own and the community policing, and reporting. That can be, I think, controlled, and it should be, when I get out. We have not seen any big reports in Columbus, who has numerous of these and so on. My questions were that I haven't heard, and this is relatively new to me. I've heard rumors of this going around. One is, how much space on the sidewalk do they get to take? I know this was a question that came up over a year ago. Okay, are we going to come to their front? This is three-fourths way across sidewalk, you got number one, aisle walk five, or...
It's in the, the sidewalk is included. So, it's fifty-one contiguous acres. So, anything within the boundary, I mean, if you wanted to start at the Legion and make a beeline for the Fox and cut through alleys, you actually could. Not that I suggest anyone does that. And there's going to be receptacles placed around, but it's a big area. It's not just a path.
Mike, is your question regarding outdoor seating?
Yeah. Oh.
That has to be approved, that has to be approved of, if I'm not mistaken, through the BZA. The BZA has to approve it, just like Norman's Niche had to have so many square feet, and they had to allow so much walkway in front of their premises. That's why they couldn't go any further out.
So, it's already addressed.
So, you're talking two different things?
The DORA simply allows the alcoholic beverage to be purchased in one of the already permit holding establishments within the geographic boundary area in a special cup. I can then take that cup and walk anywhere in that geographical boundary area. The minute I step outside of it, it's like I should be having a shock collar and electric fence, I'm now guilty of committing a crime. Open container when I step outside the boundary.
If somebody's wanting to apply to have outside seating, they have to apply through the city to get the area approved and permitted, just like Norman's Niche had...
I don't, I think you...
No, we made it in that...
Two different things. Okay.
Four actual seating out on the public right of way.
This is to make it easier for people that don't want to go through all that. For instance, a small bar that doesn't have a whole lot of seating, now, if it gets real full in there, people want to have more air to have a conversation, they can stand out front, they can go out back, they can meander over to the next place.
You just have to pay, you have to pay a small extra fee to buy it in the special cup. You can't just get that bottle of Bud Light and walk outside of it. It has to be placed in the special cup, and that part of the revenue from that cup, with the increased price, comes back to the city to cover policing, trash, signage.
But I have to educate everyone, understand it's two separate things. What you're asking for, correct me unless you can say, you're asking to do something we don't even do at Browers Festival.
Correct.
Right. And that they don't intend on doing it during the Browers Festival.
Yeah, pretty basic.
It's what it is, and a lot of folks think, oh, Bourbon Street, people are going to be, you know, passed out in the alleys and stuff. But there's a hundred and eighty-eight communities, I think, and there's really, folks haven't seen a whole lot of a change. We did go down and talk to every business within the boundaries. We've had a little bit of mixed feelings, but, you know, nobody is forced to...
To do what?
To let the people...
To urge the DORA application with the amendments.
Get a glass of wine or a drink, and then go into a shop if the shop is okay with it. And the way that that works is there's a, like a red light, green light system. So, if it's a green light, it's an establishment that sells the DORA beverages, and obviously you can take your beverage inside. If it's a yellow light, it's somewhere like Sherwin-Williams, who does not sell alcoholic beverages, but they're okay with you bringing your drink in there to pick out your paint. Or if it's a red light, they don't sell beverages, they don't want you on their property with the beverage.
Is this something the city wanted to look at, or did one of the liquor establishment bring...
The city filled out an application for it.
Yeah. But did you initiate? Did someone come to the city?
The Chamber of Commerce was approached by several businesses, liquor holding establishments during COVID. This was something that myself and economic development and a few other folks worked on a while back. And as Kevin had explained earlier, the application kind of got lost in the shuffle, and here we are again.
Oh, this gentleman hit it just about the, with the hammer on the head of the nail. Basically, you're making legal open container as long as it stays within your map and walking.
Special cup from, purchased from a liquor holding establishment.
I understand the special cup, it may be green, yellow, purple polka dots on. The question, I'm sitting here listening to you discuss this. Is this something the council's going to decide on your own, or is this something you're going to put before the people for a vote to see if they want it in their city?
So, the mechanism that the Ohio revised code authorized, the executive officer of the city has to fill out an application and submit it to council, and then council has to vote to approve or disapprove the application.
My suggestion...
But it says you can. Does it say that's the only way it can be put in? Or is the other option that the council or whoever may put it before the public for their consideration on a vote?
I don't know that there's a mechanism. I suppose you could put it for a public vote, but the actual DORA legislation that the state legislature passed puts it to council to approve or disapprove it.
Well, I'm not a killjoy. I enjoy my glass of wine, mixed drinks, or whatever, after probably close to sixty years, and I'm only seventy-two. But anyways, I would, I would have to ask the council, before you do anything like this to your city, this is just me talking. I came up here, and you noticed I had no idea the DORA to the open seating out front. Before you go any further with this, this is something that needs to be more publicized so the community knows exactly what we're talking about. Most of the people that I've even talked to, which usually my neighbors and stuff, thought this thing that was being discussed in the city was the open seating outside their establishment. And even a few of the neighbors weren't too happy about that. But now, I would ask the council, could please use some logic here to think about this and bring this more to the people, bring some publicity, publicity out to it, and let the people know, and then ask for input from the people. And if you don't hear any of this and that, avenue you're going to take.
Just to say one more thing, Mike. The suggestion I have is to have a temporary DORA. You can put it in place for just a short amount of time, kind of see how it goes thing. So, we can certainly do that, try it out, pull it out if we don't like it. Also, just that my, you know, my motive, I like to have a glass of wine once in a while too, but my motive is to help our businesses downtown, especially after the last couple years they've had.
That's, a lot of times can work. I'm a big believer, once you let the genie out of the bottle, try and get the genie back in the bottle.
Well, if you find an extra genie in a bottle boy, you let me know.
But no, the, to try to take it back, well...
It would be an extra, another application. This would be a temporary, what I'm suggesting, an emergency application, and then it would be another application to be a permanent thing. And it can be revoked at any time with the symbol pulling ready the Ohio Liquor Control and having a game.
Still, I'm saying the public needs to be better.
Absolutely.
Steve Young.
I'll show awareness and sharing it for good information. Anybody that has questions, you can email me. My email is jessid, j-e-s-s-i-d, of bussarasohio.com. You call the chamber. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Steve Young.
So, the trash cans, you're talking about the trash cans. Are the participants going to put the extra cans out, or is that going to be the city? And the city take care of it, or the...
It would hopefully be a joint effort. Pressline found that they didn't even need really more than what they had. In this plan, there's trash cans everywhere, because I was really worried about that, because we seem to have trash, you know, there's, trash would always be less. The establishments that sell the drinks would have to have wine out front that they would furnish on their own, or if they need help, they could talk to the chamber, so that if you did have a drink from the place down the street, you could throw it away before you walked in. Also, they would, could use the trash cans within the boundaries, which are Peking Park, Shine's Park, the street trash cans. There would need one or two extra in some places on the boundaries where there isn't a close public trash can close by. Some other communities take that opportunity to wrap the trash cans with information about the boundary, the rules. They make logos and stuff like that. If anybody goes downtown Delaware, they have the stretchy things that go over, like a form-fitting dress for their trash can that describes all the stuff.
Because it worries me a little bit that, like the Browers Festival, you see, they put them on the window sills. You know, I don't want the, you know, the DORA cup sitting along the window sills out there.
Yeah, you don't want to see that. And, you know, hopefully, like after music and murals, after festivals and, you know, things that we have, we have our cleaning teams come out, and, you know, the hope is that the committee of business owners, if they really want this, maybe they can pitch in and help. Our service organizations, I wonder if service organizations might be willing to help out. And, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
People like to pick up trash.
I have a feeling.
Hold on, Megan Conley's next, Vicki, I'll get to you.
Hi. Okay, so, I, a little hard hearing. This may have been dressed up there, but I don't know.
I do apologize.
So, from my understanding, these are the establishments that will be participating in this?
They are within the boundaries.
They are all the businesses located in the boundary.
And there, we need to add...
Cups can only be sold by ones that hold a liquor license.
Yeah, there's the, there's ten of them listed on page...
Nine.
Nine, we need to add one more.
Okay, so, can I take that cup and take it into another...
No.
No, I didn't do another liquor establishment, no.
Okay, so it's just the outdoors? Is that all?
Yeah. Kurt?
I already put my address over, but there is a mechanism for putting a question on ballot within a municipality. And it basically, you know, you ask a voter anything, and you say, do you want a park at this location, or do you want something else? And, you know, maybe that's something that council may want to look into, because I have a feeling that it doesn't matter what you do, you're going to have a group that may not be happy with that decision. And that might be your way of saying, hey, you know, we put this on the ballot, and this is what the voter said, so, you know, it might, it might just relieve some of your...
All right. Vicki?
Did I understand that we're not doing the DORA during the Browers Festival time? Okay, because Mr. Young made the comment, he didn't want to see those DORA cups.
No, like, like, like during the Browers, after the Browers Festival, you always see, like, the styrofoam containers?
Yeah.
I was using it as an example. I don't want to see the cups.
During the DORA is...
I was just using it as a comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And hopefully, you know, if there were issues, we would, we would figure them out in a month or two, you know, over the spring and summer, and then take time to improve and do better for next year, and ask our businesses again. How was this helpful to you? Do you want to see this again? Ask our cops, you know, did you see problems? Stuff like that.
This is a silly question, I haven't seen it before. We've talked about the liquor establishment, considering, are there any churches or anything within this boundary?
Yes. Bussaras United Methodist is very close by the boundary, and Pastor Mike Corlins was on my advisory committee when we started getting into these talks, and he told me something to the effect of, I'm not quoting Pastor Mike, I cannot condone any type of drinking, but I can understand how this would be helpful to our downtown businesses.
And I agree with him. And I'd rather ask him when he brought Mike, and I would, probably any recommendation decision that he can put forth to the people. I would like to see our downtown businesses supported and so on. But it's not...
It's got to be renewed in ninety days.
Sure.
She was...
So, thanks, Jesse. So, what does this... Oh, temporary, if we choose to do a temporary, is that ninety days?
Four months you can do.
Four months? Okay.
Hundred and twenty.
That's what the initial one was. I don't know if you can extend it any longer than that.
Okay. So, what this committee needs to decide is, do we want to pass this, or do we want to pass it as is? Do we want to pass it, well, obviously with amendment with the thirty-five thousand?
If you have another question, too.
I would like to participate in public participation.
Okay.
I mean, don't you want to hear what I have to say before you do?
I do, I was just saying what we needed to do, but you go ahead, Vicki.
I thought you were meaning...
No, I was outlining what our choices were, but I'll let you go ahead.
You want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Vicki Deshaun, eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. Kevin, I'd like to correct a statement that you made, if I may. You stated that there had been an earlier public hearing for the DORA, and that with the leaving of people and coming in of new, it didn't get done. And I believe you're referring to the leaving of Law Director Ratliff and our new interim law director, Gerner. Well, according to the Ohio Revised Code forty-three oh one point eight-two, it says, "Not earlier than thirty, but not later than sixty days after the initial publication of the public notice." The legislative authority has to pass legislation to either approve or disapprove. Well, the public notice was published, its initial publication was July twenty-third. So, thirty days would be August twenty-third, thirty days then September twenty-third. We still had Law Director Ratliff here, so...
And I think, I get what you're saying. I think, though, that he knew he was leaving, and it kind of did get lost in the shuffle, whether, you know, the semantics of exactly date, but you're not wrong. I just, that's the way it was explained, that it kind of just, we talked about it, we, everybody was kind of on board with it, and then it just kind of went, we didn't have any...
Well, yeah, and for whatever reason, and I pointed this out at another meeting, the Economic Development Committee would have meetings, but never had the DORA on it. So, okay.
Yeah. Your point is noted.
Thank you. For the public's reference, I just want them to know that I did send an email today to the council members on my observations about the DORA application. I did receive a response back from Attorney Gerner. My concerns that I had were, number one, the public notice that was placed in the telegraph form for the DORA, for the DORA application, stated that there would be a public hearing on April the fifth at seven o'clock at the regular council meeting. There was no public hearing. Mr. Gerner's response to that concern that I expressed was, "At Tuesday's meeting, the topic of DORA was brought up, and no one present provided any feedback either way." Yes, you did bring up DORA, but what you said was, there was reference, they were referring to the various committees, and your comment was, oh, I forgot, we need to refer the DORA to, and then there was discussion on, is it the health and safety, or is it the finance? That's the only discussion that was held about DORA. There was, again, you didn't have a public hearing, as was stated in the newspaper. At the council meeting, there was no solicitation by you or the council of the public to ask what is your input on the DORA. So, I have to disagree with your response that the topic was brought up. It was only brought up for, let's refer it to this committee. Second, my concern was that in the application, also in the public notice, the Ohio Revised Code says that you are to state that the application is in the office of the clerk of the municipal corporation for review. The public notice stated that the application was in the office of the Service Safety Director. Your response to that comment, or to that concern, Mr. Gerner, was that I find this to be such a diminious issue that would be of little consequence in passage of the DORA. I'll have to admit, I had to look up that word, dominiumus. It means too trivial or minor to merit consideration. So, when you make reference, which you did Tuesday night, and you did again tonight, on the code sections about the designated outdoor refreshment areas, I'm having an issue. It's like, certain things are irrelevant, or they're trivial or minor, but others aren't. I mean, I wonder what the legislature would think. I mean, this is an Ohio Revised Code that says, this is what will be done, and you're saying, that's not an issue, it's trivial. I totally disagree with that. Let's see. Finally, on the application, I pointed out, the application that the mayor signed for DORA, I got a bunch of papers, so I'm flipping through. It states that effective four-thirty, two thousand seventeen, the DORA gave the ability for communities to have the DORA. That effective date is actually four-thirty, two thousand fifteen... That effective date is actually four-thirty, two thousand fifteen, not two thousand seventeen, and that's right in the Ohio Revised Code. Um, secondly, let's see here, oh, secondly, and as you pointed out, the application states that it's for municipalities over thirty-five thousand. Well, we're under thirty-five thousand, and as I pointed out, I feel that that application needs to be changed. Um, your statement to that was, "As to the application, council can request changes to the application when reviewing and deciding whether the same should be approved." So, am I understanding that we have a meeting, or the public notice said we were gonna have a public hearing, which you didn't have a public hearing, that you're saying that after this public hearing, which, again, was not held, and that's the time when people are told, "Here's where the application is, here's for you to review, please let us know, you know what your thoughts are", that even after they've come and given their thoughts, that the city can still turn around and make changes to an application, that the public has reviewed and said, "Yep, we're fine with it"?
Yep.
And do you have to go back to the public with those changes?
You don't have to go to the public in the first place. There's no requirement for a public hearing, you just have to give notice.
And you are correct.
Thank you.
Um, but...
That's a first.
No, I think I said before that, that you've been correct.
I'll have to look back.
You look back, and I'll look back. Um, yes, you are correct, it does state that you are not to have a pub, that you do not have to public, do not have to have a public hearing, it is up to the committee. Um, that brings me back to, at the last Economic Development Committee, when you brought that up, that it wasn't necessary to have a public hearing. Uh, Councilperson Sherry then suggested, okay, if we don't have to have a public hearing, we want to make sure that the people know that Dora is going to be talked about, so can you put in the notice, this was her suggestion, can you put in the notice of the council meeting that the Dora application is going to be discussed? That way, people know. That's not what you did.
That is what I did.
But what, but your, your public notice stated...
We will discuss this at the public hearing, at the regularly scheduled council meeting.
But you didn't have a public hearing?
We had a, yeah, we did, we opened the meeting, we had a meeting, Dora was on the table, nobody discussed it, we moved on. Your definition of a public hearing and a public meeting are, it's the same thing.
No, they're not, sorry. Then let me ask you this, then why, when you did your first public notice for the first public hearing, did it state, "A public hearing will be held on Tuesday at, will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-fourth at six o'clock PM to modify, approve, dah 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 dah"?
Wasn't here, I didn't do that public notice.
There is a difference between a public hearing and a council meeting.
I disagree.
Well, I have no qualms, one way or the other, about Dora, I don't care. My concern is that it's done legally.
As is ours.
Because I wouldn't want something to happen while Dora is going on that could come back and bite the city, because the city didn't properly do what the Ohio Revised Code said should be done. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mark.
Can we make it so that we have a public meeting, that it doesn't have to be called a hearing? And have this...
Excuse me, could, Mr. McKeever, could you speak up, please, for not hearing, or I'm not hearing?
I'm not hearing, but...
Could we have a public meeting and not have to declare it as a hearing? And give a thirty-day notice of having this, or does it have to be called a hearing?
You could have a public meeting.
Excuse me, I believe that we can push it through as an emergency, because the only reason I say this, if we wait this thirty days and we do all this, then we're looking at August, fall, and we're gonna fall into this...
I, I want to do this as much as you do, but I want to do it the right way, so we need to talk process and procedure here real quick, I want to get that solved.
Okay, I apologize for the interruption.
Mark, Mark, as before.
Um, so, that is your, we don't have to say, we could just say it's a meeting on the Dora. Do we have to give thirty-day notice? Could we give it a two-week notice when we have our next committee meeting? And give ample notification somehow, other than just one notification?
Right, so you don't have to have a public hearing, so if you, you've already published, so if you want to have a meeting in a week to discuss Dora, you could set a public meeting, put it out in the media, put it out on documents on demand, and, and have an opportunity for the public to be heard.
So Steve, Dan, Mark, do you guys want to do this next week, or are you gonna wait two weeks till this next committee meeting, is my question to you?
I say soon as possible.
I, I'd say at least no more than a week.
Because you do want to have a...
To have another committee meeting of this committee that we would call a public meeting to just...
Discuss Dora.
So that we can do all this, when the proper notice is given, everybody can give their input, and we can know exactly what the process going forward is.
Well, I know the comment to that is...
Well, that's what I'm questioning.
Is one week sufficient time? Are you, are you gonna put, are you gonna put this notice in the newspaper, as you're saying, do a public notice, that there's gonna be a meeting?
In form of a meeting.
Yeah. Because if you are, I'm wondering, I mean, today's Thursday, how soon this public notice will be able to be put in the telegraph form in order to allow people that maybe look at the newspaper and not documents on demand?
I get it. Jerry, can I ask you a quick question? If we submit it tomorrow morning, would it make it into the Saturday edition?
Um...
I mean, to the best of your knowledge, I am not holding you to it.
If you're talking about a legal advertisement, I honestly have no idea. If you're talking about something that I am writing and putting into a story, you know, something I write based on tonight's meeting would be in Saturday's morning, and obviously, the story I'm planning to write will address the Dora discussion.
Would that, would that be sufficient if she puts it in as a story? And we still put a notice in, as long as we give twenty-four-hour notice prior to the actual meeting, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct.
I can send it, send it tonight, I'll forget this, I can write it up.
But I mean, would that suffice, everybody, if we put it in with Jerry's help, to put a snippet in there, or somehow, some way, showing that we're gonna have a public hearing on a day that we designate?
Aaron?
And also apply, so...
I said public meeting, but yeah, I was gonna say, it would be the same as any special meetings, so...
Right.
Because that's all, all it is, is a, a special meeting.
Yeah.
And, and, um, Mark, I know I was saying, I'll quote on this thing, but I was kind of on-site of the law, but that, that's surprising, but what I was kind of suggesting, is to make sure our citizens know what you're asking for.
Right.
And if nobody shows up for your meeting...
Right.
But please, explain what Dora is, not just that we're having a meeting on Dora, because...
Absolutely, you're right.
I have no idea what Dora is.
Well, I mean, that will, we can consult with Jerry here and see if she can...
So are, are you guys thinking next Thursday? Or are you thinking two Thursdays? That's what I'm trying to ascertain right now.
So that has to be approved or disapproved within sixty days? I don't know what we're at, but...
Well, we're, well, if this is January twenty-fifth, we're over sixty days.
Sixty days from the publication.
I, yeah, because it's sixty days, sixty days from the first publication notice, and that notice was February twenty-fifth, so sixty days, and that is...
It'd be April twenty-fifth-ish.
Ish, right.
So if we have it next week, and we can, and pass it at, if we go, if we refer it on city council meetings on the nineteenth, and it could pass there as an emergency, and it'd be passed, because we were not gonna meet till the nineteenth anyhow for city council.
Yeah.
So we'd still be making the deadline, am I correct?
Yes.
Well, now, let me ask you this. You're not gonna do a publication of notice, as, as referred in the Ohio Revised Code, the public notice, you're not doing that. Because that's where your thirty and sixty days comes in, says not earlier than thirty, but not later than sixty days after the initial publication of notice. All right, let's see here, well, it says within forty-five days, whoa. Within forty-five days after the date the application is filed with a legis, filed with a legislative authority. So what date did the mayor file the Dora application with council? And then it says forty-five days after that, the legislative authority shall publish public notice of the application, once a week, in two consecutive weeks. So that's just the public notice.
He's gonna have to amend the application anyway, does that create a new application?
So that would be something maybe to ask this, is, is all that permanent, or is all that considered for a temporary, too, all those rules? I am not certain. I'm not either, but... But my, we could ask Pressline, and it's my understanding that it's, it's my understanding that you can circumvent some of those stipulations by passing it as an emergency, that's my understanding, I would ask my attorney in Pressline before moving forward, the application doesn't need amended, it does one more business to add on to it before we settle down, update the dates, whatnot, and then I don't believe the application is considered dated and valid until it's approved by the state department.
Okay, the application is dated January twenty-fifth, twenty-two, that was the date that the mayor signed it.
And that says that's the date that he submits it to us.
That's the date he submitted?
That's what, if you read right above his signature, says he respectfully submits the following application...
Got it. So, what's, are we, we're past forty-five days from January twenty-fifth?
So, so we need to ask him to resubmit this to us, and then we need to set a hearing?
Well, you don't have to have a public...
We don't have to, but you guys have said that you want us to.
Who did?
The, the crowd here tonight really wants the, the opportunity to have people be heard, that's what I'm picking up.
Well, I don't think we said we wanted to have a public hearing, we want to have a meeting.
Hold, hold on, guys, let Vicki speak, so we can hear her, please.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, did you say you wanted a public hearing?
I think, I'm asking the council that you need to let the citizens of the city know, uh, I would like to see you, I don't know, before you proceed, um, I guess, the other wrench would put in this, was the fact that you could do a temporary one...
Yeah.
While you're reviewing, while you're talking to the citizens, and so, and as I heard, if you had this meeting, am I, did I misunderstand, that you, it's decided this is not what you want to keep doing, and you can pull it?
Correct.
So, if you started with a temporary, I'm just throwing something out to the wind here, if you started with a temporary, you reviewed it, and this, you felt this is something you want to try, go ahead and do your meeting, and see what the people have to say about it.
So a new application from the mayor that has the updates of the additional business, correction to the thirty-five thousand number, and asking as a temporary, then we could hold a special committee meeting one week from tonight to address such, and then we could make a, a decision whether we want to approve or deny his request.
But you still have to put this public notice in the newspaper to run for two consecutive weeks.
But that would still work if you didn't...
And all this public notice will say is that an application has been submitted, or has been received by the council, and that application is on file with...
Our clerk's office.
And, okay, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have been back there talking from there, because the council will see that. Um... It will cost money, um, but at the same time, when you do this public notice, just as a little added, whatever, you could state in there that a public, or a special committee meeting, or, or, or you could say a public meeting will be held on such and such a day...
At the special committee meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you could have that in here. But yeah, it's, I mean, unless we, oh, I'm not gonna say that. Yeah, it says that you shall publish a public notice of the application for once, once a week, for two consecutive weeks.
Yeah, now, the fact that we already did that, does that change anything, or not, in your opinion?
Well...
Because the dates are gonna be wrong.
And the forty, you, within forty-five days after the date the application is filed, you're getting a new application.
Correct.
So your forty-five days will start when you get this new application. And then that's where you publish the public notice of the application.
Why do you need a new application? Why don't you modify the application?
That's why I'm asking all the legal terms here.
Once you modify it, it becomes a new application.
No, the statute allows for the council to modify it, it specifically says to approve, modify that application. I would say especially, and I'll do the research to figure out if we're in compliance with the applicable laws, and if we're not, we'll cancel it.
All right.
We gotta also think, next Thursday's Monday, Thursday, so that'd be hard for a lot of people who...
I'm just looking at days open on the calendar, I didn't think of that.
Wednesday would be a better day than Thursday due to it is highest religious holiday.
And then we're back to, if we're gonna go with the original application, we have to remember that no later than sixty days after, well, that's sixty days after the initial publication of, I don't think you could go with that.
How about you take a look at it tomorrow, and you can, we can set a meeting once you come up with a recommendation, I think we're gonna sit here, spin our wheels all night, all night, trying to get to the bottom of this, so if you could look at that tomorrow, and let us know, and we'll, we'll go from there, I think that's the best we can do right now.
And, and again, and I, I say this to Jessie, I have no problems, or I have no, really no, I don't have any feelings one way or the other. I just, I would hope that you would agree that, I mean, the legal...
There's, there's, for the emergency portion, I mean, I wish Rob was here, because he did it with Pressline, um, and if I could call him up and ask him what he did, that's what I'd do, but, um, you know, I'm gonna do it the right way and everything, too, and I appreciate your thoroughness, I really, really do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you.
Is there any other public participation this evening for health and safety? During that, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at seven fifty PM.
All right, it is Thursday, April seventh, seven fifty-four PM, and this is the Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting.
I'm gonna call the Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at seven fifty-four PM, members President Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Brenton Potter, and Sarah and Sherrod's chair, that's myself. All right, so first on the agenda, do we have any public participation?
Nope.
I see none, so now we're going to go to the approval of minutes from March seventeenth from the regular Public Lands and Buildings meeting.
There are no minutes to approve.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how to do that.
I said, do we still need to approve the minutes from the meeting before that?
The, the committee didn't meet, there was no, there was no meeting.
The meeting before, because we did not have the last one.
Yeah.
So I don't need, we don't need the March seventeenth minutes, we need the ones from the meeting before, which we don't have in front of us right now.
But I will, I will approve them, I will approve...
We, we did have them in front of us, so yeah.
So we did have them in front of us. You want a motion to approve the previous week's minute?
The previous week's, week's minutes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, so as of that, we had nothing else on our agenda this evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn at 7:56 PM. Two minutes.
Okay, it's Thursday, April 7th, 7:58 PM, and this is the Plating Committee meeting.
Okay, members Presidents Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair, called to order at 7:58 PM, public participation.
I just wanted to speak on the, their rezone. Is that going to be at a later time?
That's on the agenda for this one.
Can I wait till then?
Yes, it is.
Do you want to talk now or later?
You might as well. You can say it now and then we're going to proceed.
Well, I had questions about it. Okay, Kurt Fankow, 616 Prospect. Is the proposal that Landon talked about earlier, is that set in stone? We have to go that way or could it be a different way? That's like less red tape with the calling of extra meetings and stuff? Because I just feel like it could be something that's condensed down into a really simple hearing with the BZA and, you know, the neighbors all get those notices and they can come. But it sounds like there's like several additional steps on that proposal that Landon had and.
I think he, I think he said, if I can talk, please.
Go ready.
That the BZA didn't have nothing to do with it, doesn't he? He said that, I believe.
Currently.
Current.
But you could legislate an ordinance that would put it under the BZA, which would then be an easier path.
You could. They want to, but that's not what they're considering. You could.
But they're already, the route they're already going, we'd have to start all over again if we did it a different way, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That was just the only question I had.
As long as I've been here, this is the first time this has happened. So 12 years.
Yeah, I know, I know that the zoning changes require a lot of additional steps and I just thought maybe if, if you made the right change now, it would create way less hurdles to jump through in the future is all.
All right.
John Rostache, 1115 Dean Street, Bussiris. A discontinuance, when a property falls into discontinuance, it's no light matter to be considered. A lot of those properties that fall into discontinuance are, can be problem properties in the neighborhoods that they're at. And the reason they are in that discontinuance is there's no clear path to allow them to come back into service and, and that can be a real problem for the neighborhood. So the reason that it was chosen to take this, these steps was that it gives a public notice, you have a public hearing, it allows the neighborhood, it allows everybody in the community a chance to hear what the problem is and why it's so important that we, the community, look at this and have an input and allow council, the full council, to decide. Not just one body, but the full council. And so you have constituents that you have to answer to as a council. So in looking at this, it, it really is a thorough vetting process. Is this discontinued use of this property something that the community wants to have put back into, into service in that neighborhood? Is that what's going to be appropriate? Is it appropriate for our economy to have that happen? So that is why that this route was chosen and why Landon and the administration felt that this was the best process for this specific situation. Thank you.
Thank you, John, first place.
Thanks, John.
You don't have to repeat your address. We are.
You want my name?
Yes, please.
Vicki DeShawn. I also sent an email today to council and to the law director concerning the public hearing that we had earlier this evening. I have no problem with what council committee is proposing, but I do have concerns with the legality of it, if the procedure's being followed properly. As you all know, we're on the fourth, we had the fourth public hearing. We'll have, I'll refer to it as four screw-ups as you did.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah, you can use my words against me.
The concern that I have, and I did not receive a response back to my email from the law director, so I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I guess I'm assuming no, no response back. And the fact that you had the public hearing means that, you know, he didn't agree with me and that's fine. The problem that I have is that, um, let's see here. The minutes for the Plating Committee, the approved minutes for January 6th, '22 stated, McKeever set the public hearing regarding Bussiris codified ordinance 115.05. The correct codified ordinance number is 1151.05. The minutes were typed correctly because I listened to the audio and 115.05 is what was stated by Mr. McKeever. However, Mr. McKeever made no reference to the Bussiris codified ordinance 1157.07. So I'm questioning, and I should say the Open Meetings Act states that a public body cannot rely on sources other than their approved minutes to argue that their minutes contain a full and accurate record of their proceedings. There were things said at the meeting that were not put in the minutes, one of those being that McKeever stated that the public hearing, after they were going back and forth, would be, quote, "for both pieces of legislation for the public hearing that we previously had." Again, that wasn't in the council minutes, and even if it had been put in the council minutes, that's not accurate enough to let the public know because according to the Open Meetings Act, a public body must keep full and accurate minutes. They don't have to be verbatim, but they must include enough facts and information to permit the public to understand. Well, if I read this, "for both pieces of legislation for the public hearing that we previously had," do you think someone's going to figure out that that means we're talking about 1151.05 and 1157.07? I don't think so. My big concern is that the last time, when we had our third public hearing, which we didn't have a quorum at, interim law director Gernert stated that, yes, we need to have another public hearing because zoning is contentious and that inappropriate passage of legislation can become unenforceable in the future. And I feel, for how long you've had to wait for this, I'm going to point fingers. All these times that we've had first, second, third public hearings, the screw-ups have been on the part of the committee. They have a meeting, no quorum. They know you have to have a quorum at a meeting. The one, they went and passed the legislation before the public hearing was even held. So that caused the first public hearing to be canceled. The second again was because there was no quorum. The third was canceled because the committee thought that the public hearing notice had not been placed in the newspaper. So again, they canceled that public hearing. But I supplied them a copy of the public hearing notice that was in the newspaper. So that makes us up to, you know, public hearing number four. That could have all been avoided. And again, I apologize to you for that. My purpose for coming up here and saying what I have said and what I put in an email so that the, all council and committee would have this to review and know what my thoughts were so that I didn't have to go through everything tonight is I don't want, I fear that if something is passed tonight, that the possibility exists just based on, again, I mean, these are the law directors, interim law directors' words, that inappropriate passage of legislation can become unenforceable in the future because zoning is contentious. I would hate for something later down the line, if the legislation is passed, that puts your business in jeopardy. I'm not saying it will, but, you know, those are my thoughts. And for, for your information, and I mean the others know, I'm a stickler when it comes to the law. I served as a law clerk for the law director for 38 years. I mean, that was my job. And it, it just, it concerns me that we're not following the law. Thank you.
So if I may, I mean, we could go back and amend the minutes, but the intent was clear that we were considering both the revision of 1151.05 as well as 1157.07. In committee, we had been discussing these, both pieces of zoning legislation hand in hand. It was continually the intent to hold one public hearing for both pieces of legislation. And lastly, and most importantly, the notice that was provided in the newspaper stated clearly that the hearing was for both pieces of legislation and both pieces of legislation have been available for inspection at the engineer's office pursuant to statute. I don't really find an issue with passing or asking to pass this today.
I agree with what you're saying, that the public notice was published correctly.
Twice in one day. You agreed with me twice today.
What's that?
You agreed with me twice today.
Okay. Maybe sometime you'll agree with me. The public hearing notice was correct. It stated correctly the Bussiris codified ordinance numbers. But the public hearing notice was done based on what?
Based upon Mr. McKeever asking for both pieces of legislation for the public hearing we previously had. It's on the paper. You can go back and look at the committee, what we were talking about that day. You can go back and look what the previous public hearing is. Is it the best request? No, but is sufficient to put me on notice of what I have to publish? Yes.
Okay.
I just hope everything goes okay for you.
Somebody asked if we make a motion to amend our minutes to have that correctly stated as 1151.05 that I.
Well, if you said 151.05, that's what it says. So that's what the minutes have to reflect. But you could amend them to say that you also, McKeever also stated for both pieces of legislation for the public hearing we previously had, which would then adequately put people on notice that we were talking about those two pieces of legislation. And that's what we published for, for the public hearing.
So you have that in front of you, committee. You can do that and we can have that corrected on the minutes. Then we can proceed with.
But now, I may ask, because you can, you really need to speak up. It's, it's, it's.
I'm sorry. It's been a long day. I've been up since four o'clock.
Well, you know.
I'm trying to, trying to move along, so go ahead.
You say you're going to amend the minutes and you're amending the minutes to state what?
That McKeever states for both pieces of legislation for the public hearing we previously had, we want to publish for both pieces of legislation.
Okay.
That's what you said he said.
Yes, and that is what he said because I've listened to it like three different times. So, okay. I didn't know if you were going to put in there 1151.05 and 1157.07 because he did not state that.
He did not state that. So you cannot put that in there.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move to amend those minutes to include the statement that Mr. Gernert just read, which was verbatim from what Mr. McKeever did state during said meeting.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. There's no other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed.
We're amending the January 6th?
March 17th.
What are we amending?
Not the March 17th.
No.
The meeting that we published.
The meeting that requested the publication.
Megan, it's, it's the January 6th, 2022 council day meeting minutes. It's right in email that I've sent to you and all the others.
Thank you, Vicki.
Pardon?
I said, thank you. Okay, with that, does the committee have any questions about this legislation as what was stated by John? To clarify, and you can look at it on this page showing the potential amendment.
I think we have to approve our minutes.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. I'm moving ahead.
I'm making motion to reapprove the minutes on March 17th.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. All right. The zoning changes. You have in front of you, as stated here, the additional language to Bussiris codified ordinance 1151.02 to allow for a process by which a property that has fallen in discontinuance can apply to allow for the reinstatement of a non-conforming use, the application process similar to that of the amendment process, chapter 1145, Planning Commission, Plating Committee, public hearing, then city council. Considerations characteristic of adjacent properties and neighborhood, commercial history of property, specific non-conforming use requested, i.e. chiropractic office, impact on general welfare of the adjacent properties and other residents of the city, including parking vehicle access, traffic flow, hours of operation, signage, et cetera. Is there any problems with that?
No.
Okay, we'll go on and make this all one.
No.
Has to be two.
Two separate.
Has to be two.
That's fine. We'll make it two.
I'd like to make a motion requesting emergency legislation updating 1151.02, the discontinuance ordinance in conjunction with Hyatt is right at House presented by Mr. Hill.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Unanimous. Okay, the county garage fairground zoning, re-proposed zoning, let me get to the right page, of chapter 1179, LIC.
No, that's just the.
I'm sorry.
It's 1157.02.
1157.0.
07.
1157.
Point 07.
Point 07. Okay.
Updating the Bussiris zoning district maps.
Which is two. Which is to update the BISRS zoning district map, which includes the areas that were explained during the meeting, which is out on Wetstone, which is part of the fairgrounds, and also the property owned by the Crawford County... Engineering office. Do I have a motion to have this approved?
So moved.
As, you want that as an emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passed. Duly noted, Dan. Any public participation? If not...
Any more?
Yes, Mike.
Can I make one quick thing? Mr. Gurnert, I'm a lawyer, and let me ask you this question. When a council or a committee like this get together, a lot of material crosses, numbers and letters, but as I recall, the court is not that specific. You're to make it that specific. But if the people present, be it out here or in, know what the process is and what's going on, and the intent is not, the court is some kind of lenient in expecting what the intent is for anything, because I recall. Am I correct?
Yeah.
There is some lenience to this.
Absolutely.
And the court looks at what the intent of the meeting or the operation was, they recognize type of errors.
Right. And they look at...
And there's a lot of material.
If there's an aggrieved party, what was the, what was the, the perceived error? What, what did that cause?
And I think I'm saying this for the people here to know that the courts are not all that black and white and, oh, if you didn't cross this, this V dot this I that atop the door or whatever, that the courts do have common sense and logic in most of the time of winter. And I just wanted to point that out to the people. Look at what has transpired here tonight. So I just wanted to ask Mr. Gurnert if he's in agreement with my understanding, I'm sitting here listening.
Yeah.
And yes, there can be errors in reading a particular number or a minute, and the minutes are notes. They're not specific of every word his take note, but I just wanted to bring out, ask Mr. Gurnert a question. I didn't think the situation was any different than I felt within the courts over my 40 years.
Right.
The courts do recognize, and they look at the intent, and the understanding that all the people were there, knew what was going on. That's why I have to ask and say this.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I will adjourn plating committee at 8:21 PM.
Okay, Mike Seron.
It is Thursday, April 7th, 8:23 PM, and this is the Economic Development Committee meeting.
I'd like to call Economic Development to order at 8:23 PM. Members present, Eric Scherich, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Is there any public participation? Seeing none, I'll move on to the approval of minutes from the March 17th, 2022 Regular Economic Development Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 17th committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Lisa, what's, sorry, I, I...
Any other public participation? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We will adjourn at 8:24.
Okay, it's Thursday, April 7th, 8:25 PM, and this is the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, I'll call Finance to order at 8:26. And members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Stegall, myself, Chair. Any public participation?
I would like to speak before, if I could.
Oh, before, okay, I'm sorry. I got the wrong words.
That's all right.
She didn't want to say so.
Okay. So in regards to the tax credit that the mayor mentioned during his State of the City address, you know, there's been a lot of contention amongst the public. There's been a lot of problems in not knowing exactly when this is gonna get addressed, when it's not gonna be addressed. There's not been a real clear plan given. You know, given the right circumstances, I would be in favor of it, but we're paying $4 for gas, we've got jobs that are leaving the community, now's not the right time for this ask. And I've already informed the mayor that my intention, what I was gonna do, and explained to him why. You know, I would like to make a motion to remove this from the open projects list currently, and when a better plan is brought forward, when he's ready to discuss it, then that, we can make the decision at that time if we want to put it into committee. But these guys don't need to come to every meeting, not knowing if today's the day we're gonna talk about it or not. They've got better things to do with their lives. And, and I just wanna make sure that we can, we can talk about it when it's time to be talked about, and not, not amend it too soon. Lisa pointed out to me that 26% of our community is currently working out of town. This does affect a lot of people, and I, I just wanna make a motion to remove this from open projects.
I'll second that.
All right, I'll entertain that motion, and Mark's second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? All right. So now, public participation.
First off, my name is Lisa Alsop, and I do live at 1323 North Sandusky Avenue. I would like to apologize, not just to the guys that are sitting here on the Finance Committee, but the rest of council. I know it is not easy to sit back there when people are angry and upset about things. I try to remain as professional as possible.
You can.
Yet, I don't want you to take it as something that you guys have done, because that discourages people from service. So having said that, if I did make anyone feel like I was attacking them personally or, because I wasn't, I apologize, and I appreciate what all of you do.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right. So our approval of minutes from March...
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bob Taylor, 411 Plymouth, and, yeah, just to reiterate what Lisa says, I know I come across as very aggressive. You have to understand my perspective and where I'm from. I spent four years in the Marine Infantry. I'm animated when I speak. I talk with my hands. I'm not here to personally attack. I am here to point out things that my elected officials are doing that I don't agree with. But I will make one thing very clear. If I'm ever actually intent on being aggressive, there will not be anything, a mistake about it. It will be very intent. It won't be just me standing at a podium. Like, I'm here to talk, I'm at a podium. And I, if anyone takes offense to how I speak, my lack of tact, I cannot help you with that, and I won't apologize for that. That's who I am, that's how I talk. Since we're talking about taxes, I know we're not gonna talk about the tax credit. That's fine, I'm glad we're not. At some point in time, we will. I will say this, after hearing earlier, that we're, we spent $91,000 on a bunch of ground-up asphalt for one of the reservoirs. We can't be in that too much of financial dire straits if we're spending $91,000 for a path at the reservoir. I walk my dog out there quite often in the last eight years. It's not a need. And also, a point I made to the mayor, it's time to maybe consider making the mayor's seat a part-time position. He had time yesterday to spend three hours at a meeting that had no concern for city business, and I don't see how it was any personal business of Mayor Research. And it was during the day when he should have been at City Hall, working on city business, not sitting at the county courthouse, at the Board of Elections, worried about what's going on with Mr. Fankhauser.
I believe he was subpoenaed.
He was subpoenaed? Oh, I stand corrected. I stand corrected. Hopefully they reimbursed him for the money he lost for not working. $25. But again, I, I still, I'll stay, stay with my statement that it's probably time to look at cutting some costs at the mayor's seat. And that, I'll let you guys go. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Any more? Okay. Minutes? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Sir?
I guess, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, on to...
Joyce. I'm not, I'm not trying to... She's been waiting.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to look at the appropriation first. That one's, that one's pretty simple. We're just appropriating in the general fund in Program One, which is security of persons and property, in the police department, $1,050 to the materials and supplies category. And these funds are just a pass-through, this was donations for the police explorers. And we need to get that appropriated to pay for their competition down in Columbus.
I'll make a motion.
This needs to be emergency. Emergency, yes.
I make this as an emergency motion.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So then we have transfers, and I think these were explained to you earlier as far as the projects that we have to do, that we have planned for this year. In the Waterworks Fund, in distribution, we are doing some major projects that, of course, came in way over the engineer's estimate. So we need to transfer from the Distribution Department contractual services, $45,000. And plus, we're going to, I know that Dylan said we were taking it out of the Waterworks Replacement Fund. That's not the case. What we're doing is moving $112,000 out of the transfers in Waterworks that would have gone to the Waterworks Replacement. I don't want to move it to Waterworks Replacement and then appropriate it there to add to this. So we're just going to move that $112,000 out of the transfers, and both of those will go to capital outlay for the waterline projects. So the 112 and 45 is $157,000 to capital outlay. We do have another, I guess that's in sewers and drains. We'll move to the sewers and drains in sewage disposal, and we're moving $22,500 from contractual services to the capital outlay. This is for, let me look here, I need to look it up.
Warren Street.
Yeah, it's the Warren Street project.
The CSO project.
Yes. And...
You look from them. CSO 17, so...
Right. And we're also doing, let's see, this is part of, yeah, the Warren Street, the sewer separation. One transfer that is not on here, because it's within the same category, so it doesn't have to be legislated, we're also moving $29,000 out of the CSO 17 repairs down to the West Warren Sewer Separation. And that will cover these increase in costs so that we can go out to bid and have the funds to get these projects done. So, you know, we don't need, this needs to be an emergency, but we won't pass this until the 19th, because other legislation you're passing will be sending it out to bid, and, you know, that's more important, to get that rolling. We'll do the appropriation later, and then we'll have the funds to do the purchase orders for the projects.
Okay. Can I have a motion to, for the transfers?
As an emergency, so moved.
Sir? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess you're all done, huh?
I think she's gonna sit here.
I guess we're on the...
I may as well sit here till this is over now.
Did he cover that?
No, he covered that. We just need myself to go out and bid.
Oh, you need a legislation to go out to bid for the Warren Street Sewer Project?
Yes.
That's what we need.
Not to exceed $149,500.
Also moved to allow the Service Director to go out to bid for the Warren Street Sewer Project for a cost not to exceed $149,500 as an emergency.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Lyons Park Grant. Did we get some grant money?
Well, I haven't done anything with it yet.
Okay.
I got told last week that there is a grant for, for them ODNR, I do believe, through Jennifer Jeanette, and she said that it can be used for a smaller splash park out at Lyons.
Would that just tickle me?
The only thing that we would have to do, we have an in-kind, I think it's either 20 or 30%, which is a lot of work we do, whether it's labor, putting in, you know, whatever we do, that's in-kind, that'll be part of our percent. I just want to know if you want me to move forward and to fill out all the paperwork and get it turned in. It's due by June 1st.
I make a motion for you to go.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, get on it. Parts of Road Waterline, is that going up, same thing going up to bid, or?
Yes, we need to be able to go out to bid not to exceed $455,210.
I make a motion to, to go out for bid for $455,210 as an emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. OPWC.
Need a motion to go out to bid?
Aye.
Not to exceed $540,836.50.
I make a motion.
$540,836.50.
Dollars and 50 cents.
50 cents.
I make a motion as an emergency.
Again, I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't go over that by a nipple.
50 cents.
Dylan will have to eat it.
I'll give you the nipple. So we're talking, we're just, this, this money was, had already in the budget and...
Yeah. And it's been reduced, tax, right?
So we really, do we, do you have to go out to bid on this, or?
On the off-weight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so that's what we need. Not to exceed $91,000, go out to bid for the off-weight.
So moved as an emergency.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, so that, that was already budgeted, well, all these were, weren't they?
Yeah. You had to see this one up in costs, so we had...
Yeah, we had to...
We had to move some money in, hopefully we got some tax here.
Okay. So, any, any more public participation? Oh, you guys made it to the end.
They, they need a trophy.
Yeah.
I was invited for a little bit on the...
Everybody else is gonna miss the pizza.
So moved.
Second.
8:38.
8:38.